Welcome to the ordinary council meeting of Ararat Rural City on the 17th of March 2020. We'll open the meeting with section one, procedural matters, and a statement regarding live streaming. Council is keen to engage with members of the community and now livestreams the formal council meetings to make them accessible. The stream will be available to view on Ararat Rural City Council's Facebook page from 6pm and on council's website, www ararat.vic.gov.au from Wednesday morning following the council meeting. You do not require a Facebook account to watch the live broadcast. Simply enter facebook.com/araratruralcitycouncil into your address bar. Councillors, please rise for the traditional acknowledgement, opening prayer, and councillor's pledge. Councillor Braithwaite.
Traditional acknowledgement. We acknowledge the traditional owners of land on which we meet today and pay respects to their elders, past, present, and emerging.
Councillor Orwood.
The opening prayer. Almighty God, we humbly ask you to help us as elected councillors of the Ararat Rural City Council, guide our deliberations, prosper what is your will for us, to your honour and glory and for the welfare and benefit of the people whom we serve in the Ararat Rural City.
And councillor Deutsch.
Councillor's pledge. We will undertake the duties of the office of councillor in the best interest of the people of the municipal district of Ararat Rural City Council and faithfully and impartially carry out the functions, the powers, authorities, and discussions vested in us under the Local Government Act 1989 or any other act to the best of our skills and judgment.
Thank you. Please be seated. We move now to apologies, and I have a recommendation that the apology of councillor David Patman and councillor Fayhall be accepted. Moved councillor Beale, seconded councillor Deutsch. Those in favour? That is carried. Confirmation of minutes. I have a recommendation that the minutes of the council meeting held on the 18th of February 2020 be confirmed. Do I have somebody to move that?
Somebody.
Councillor Orwood, thank you, seconded councillor Braithwaite. Those in favour? Carried. 1.5, the declaration of disclosure of interests. These are to be made immediately prior to any relevant item being discussed as per the Local Government Act 1989, section 79.2. Do I have somebody to move that? Oh, do I have any declaration of interests for the meeting that we have this evening? There being that, I'll move on to section 1.6, the admission of urgent business.
I'll move councillor Metz's urgent business item. Title of mail or statement, this matter be considered immediately.
Thank you.
One second there.
Seconded councillor Braithwaite. Councillors, I would like to, first of all, vote on whether that is going to be admitted. So those in favour of admission of urgent business? Carried. Thank you. I have a statement to make regarding COVID-19, known as the coronavirus. To our Ararat Rural City residents, councillors, CEO, and staff, we are living in challenging times amid the spread of COVID-19, more commonly referred to as the coronavirus. Australians are worried and are looking to government agencies for reassurance, stewardship, and leadership. This week, the Premier Daniel Andrews declared a state of emergency for Victoria, which meant council needed to make some difficult decisions around service delivery and be proactive in helping reduce the risk of spreading diseases in our community. I want to reassure the community that our decisions were made keeping the health and wellbeing of our residents foremost in our minds and are based on recommendations and advice from government agencies. We did not make these decisions lightly. The situation with coronavirus is rapidly evolving, and council is keeping in close contact with state and federal government agencies, East Grahampean's Health Service, and the Municipal Association of Victoria. I want to reassure residents that while we have temporarily suspended some services such as the Ararat Fitness Centre, the Ararat Gallery Tama, Gumsan Chinese Heritage Centre, and the Ararat Library, we will reopen these facilities as soon as it is deemed safe to do so. Temporarily closing services where people gather in groups and come into contact with one another is one very important action council can take to help lessen the spread of the coronavirus. However, it's important to note that Ararat Rural City Council will continue essential services, some with modified arrangements, while we have adequate staffing levels. This includes Meals on Wheels and our community care service, which looks after some of the most vulnerable people in our community, our elderly. Our curbside waste collections will continue unaltered, and rural transfer stations will remain open for the time being. The Ararat Transfer Station will also stay open, but will operate on reduced hours. For a full list of service closures and modified service arrangements, residents should visit the council website at ararat.vic.gov.au and click on the homepage. I also encourage people to follow our social media channels, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram for council updates on the situation as it evolves. I also need to stress the importance of sourcing information about the coronavirus from reputable official sources, such as state and federal government agencies. Links to official websites as well as hotline phone numbers can also be found on our website. Of course, we also encourage residents to follow the advice on good hygiene practices provided by the government to ensure we all do our part to help reduce the spread of the virus. To the community, please know that Ararat Rural City Council is doing all it can to mitigate the risk to our residents, and I reiterate that we have your interests, your health, and your safety foremost in our minds. Ararat Rural City is a strong and resilient community, and I know we will all help each other through this challenging time. Be mindful, please, that a significant number of our volunteers are senior citizens, and we must protect their health. Think seriously about what you can do to assist others in their time of need. I thank everyone, those from government agencies and health organisations, and our local frontline health workers who are working tirelessly to contain the spread of COVID-19 and doing all they can to help keep people safe. I also thank my fellow councillors, the CEO, Dr Tim Harrison, and staff members for their support as we, your council, seek to tackle the challenges that we're facing together. Thank you for your time. Be kind, stay nice, look out for each other, and above all, stay healthy and safe. Thank you. We move now to section two of our meeting, public participation. Mr CEO, we've got no gallery present this evening, and that was a response that we made to the COVID-19 concerns. Likewise, we don't have any deputations or presentations. I think I've added deputations and presentations. 2.3 petitions. Do we have any new petitions?
We have no new petitions, Madam Mayor, but we have two from last month.
Very good. Would you like to present 2.31, petition Truscott Street?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Last month, as you recall, we received petition from residents of Truscott Street and surrounding streets asking for the road to be sealed. They had claimed to have high traffic volume, travelling through, past motor repair vehicles, trucks and school buses, given services staff and so forth. And there was a need, they believe, to alleviate some health concerns around the hazards, around respiratory problems in that space. One of our engineering staff inspected the site and proposed some actions around sealing and installing Kerbin Channel in Truscott Street between Queen Street and Burke Road. It was a recommendation that sits there. I might also just add that, working through our capital works planning for the forthcoming year, this is one of the urban roads that is moving towards the top of that planning sheet at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, any questions?
I gather this is going to be a minimalist approach with only Kerbin Channel at the driveways if they request.
If they request, councillor.
It's written here.
Yeah.
I'm just pointing out.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
It's not a full Kerbin Channel.
No, it's Kerbin Channel, yeah, as required.
That would be over the top.
Are there any further questions, councillors? Councillor Beale's.
It's actually a question in relation to both of them, this one and the next one. Because I know this very quite well. Ironback Lane is the other one, and around Ironback Lane there's at least three other streets that have sufficient, if they would, let's put it this way, motivate to send a petition, would expect the same result. So is there actually a hierarchy of need being decided by the council in relation to these unsold roads within the municipality, and I mean the whole municipality? Elmhurst, Lake Bolaq, et cetera, not just Ararat?
Well, good, Madam Mayor. We're currently doing a significant amount of work, councillor Beale, around establishing a hierarchy of need for our local road network in its entirety. There's been significant work done around the rural roads in that work, because that's the most immediate number of kilometres of road that we have to manage. There's also work being done around our urban road network as well. As I said, I think the Truscott Street project is one that has come to the fore through that planning at this point in time, whereas the second project, Ironback, is not so far advanced in that process.
Thanks councillor Orwood. But just before we move to moving, was there any other question from councillors? No further discussion?
I was just going to make the comment that there is reference to a priority order works programme in the construction of urban and urban fringe gravel to seal roads policy that we reviewed last month, and it does give that hierarchy in terms of the points that need to be taken into consideration. But acknowledge, yes councillor Beale's, we're here to get to that point of actually naming roads and placing them in an order of need. So councillor Orwood, you're moving the motion. Do I have somebody to second the motion?
This is for Truscott?
This is for Truscott Street. This is item 2.31. The recommendation is that council approve an allocation to the coming year's capital budget to cover the cost of sealing and installing Kerbin Channel to Truscott Street between Queen Street South and Burke Road, and that letters are written to the residents of Truscott Street advising them of the decision. So I have a mover, and there is...
We did it.
We did it, we seconded it.
Thank you councillor Braithwaite, a seconder. Do you wish to speak to the motion, councillor Orwood?
No.
Councillor Braithwaite?
I'm in favour of this because of the type of treatment we're going to use, which isn't a full multi. And also, this is a road that is a link road that connects two roads. It's not a dead-end road, like I think Ironback Lane might be.
Councillor Beale's.
I'll speak against the motion. It's not actually against the motion, it's against the process, if you like. We're allocating money to be spent in next year's budget before we set the amount of money we're going to put in the budget. So if we don't put enough money in the budget, these two go through, maybe only these two done, who may not appear in the priority list in later on. And it's another example of, we've done two of these, we did two last year through this process, but there the budget had been set and the savings were found and they could be added on. This is starting from a different face point. It's starting from, here's the job. Council always are saying this is a priority and find the budget later. And I just don't like that as a principle. I've got nothing wrong with the road, it does need to be done, but there's a lot that needs to be done.
Are you proposing an amendment to the motion?
No.
So am I of the understanding that if it was just that the item be placed on consideration in that budget?
I could do with that, yes.
Yeah. So that we're not actually allocating $160,000, where what we're saying is, okay, this project will be included with all the other projects that we consider in the 2021 Works Programme. That's the distinction, I think.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Can I actually speak to the motion?
With honour.
Can I speak to the motion?
Question mark.
I can understand what councillors are actually saying, that this particular street, if you have a good look at it, it does suffer a lot of dust. And I think that probably in past positions, you probably do have a business so close to a residential area, but we do have that, and that's why I'm actually supporting the motion, because I can see that there really is a need to do something in this particular area. So I'll be supporting the motion.
So that's the conclusion of speaking?
Well, are we going to consider an amendment to just say that it's going to be included in the, not in the 2020, 2021?
That's up to...
For consideration.
That's up to a councillor to report that amendment.
Well, I'd move that amendment.
Is there a seconder for the amendment to the motion? Can I just clarify, we're adding for consideration to the amended motion?
Yeah, yeah. So it gets considered only, along with everything else? So it's been elevated up the chain? And in line with councillor Beale's principle that we don't allocate money before we've got it? That will take care of that.
Is that clear, councillors, or do you have further discussion on the amendment? We have moved by councillor Braithwaite and seconded by councillor Deutsch. So we're now voting on the amended motion?
Yep.
So councillors, those in favour? And those against?
I hope I've got it recorded.
Thank you. Division recorded with councillor Orwood?
Division, I understand.
Or recorded against, or a division?
Against.
Against. Thank you. Thanks, Ms Bullock.
Oh, I'll vote for it when it comes up, for next time.
Moving on to 2.32, another petition item, Ironback Lane, Mr CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is again a petition regarding, from residents around Ironback Lane, including a couple of interstate people who also signed it. There are two issues here, one's a dust issue again, because it's an unsold road. There's also an issue around flooding that's been identified by the residents. There's certainly been identified a culvert that's filled with silt, and section table drain has been eroded, which could reinforce the potential for flooding there. And there is a recommendation from council officer around, again, a budget allocation over the next financial year, similar to the last recommendation, and again, that we're going to be making an advising of the decision.
Are there any questions, councillors?
Well, this is a culversap, isn't it?
Yes.
It's not through road. And there's, from what I can see, there's mainly four people that would benefit from this work.
Yep.
And they want the full treatment. Kerbin channel, culversap, the whole lane, sealed. For four residents. I'd just like to say that we should do the same treatment as we just did with Truscott, put it on the list to be considered in the 2021 Works Programme.
Now, can I speak some clarification on the process? Let me just add that on to that one, this has been an amendment which we've moved forward. Yeah, yeah.
That means we move to some...
You'd like to move that as a motion, that there be consideration for an allocation in the coming year's budget?
And I think if the residents are actually contacted about that, I would second it. If the residents are to be contacted about the position that we're taking, I would second it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So part two of the motion as it stands would remain under that?
Well, most of that had a wing. It's in the next, part two of consideration. Which treatment do is another thing.
Would you like to speak to the motion, councillor Braithwaite?
No, I think that's true. I think we've treated them both equally. And we haven't spent money we don't have, yet.
Councillor Orwood, do you wish to speak to the motion?
No.
Does anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? That being the case, we'll put the amended motion that council consider put up for consideration and allocation, and also the second part of the motion that letters be written to the residents of Ironback Lane. Those in favour? And those against? That is carried. Thank you councillors. Section three, reports requiring council decision. The first item, 3.1, Maggivney and Tewson Street tree removal. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is, I think this honour's been to council previously, some time ago. Are there some gum trees in Maggivney and Tewson Streets in Ararat which local residents have very strong concern over their safety at this point in time? That concern is shared by an Arbrist, in an Arbrist's report, and also shared by council staff around these particular trees. The cost of removal will be $25,000 to $30,000, but I think we've seen recently across Victoria a couple of instances where gum tree limbs have actually taken people's lives as they fall in various places. Quite hard, you can't predict the falling. I think there's a notion that these probably aren't appropriate street trees for an urban area in Ararat. I would commend the recommendation to council to consider removal of those trees in Tewson and Maggivney Street. There are pampin gums, layering gums, and spotted gums.
Thank you. Are there any questions, councillor Orwood?
No.
Any questions? No? Councillor Orwood?
Would you like to move the recommendation?
Thank you. We have that recommendation in three parts there. Do I have a seconder? For the, thank you councillor Deutsch. Do you wish to speak, councillor Orwood?
I do. This was a, this has been an ongoing problem for many, many years, and at Christmas time I was approached by one of the residents because what has been happening is that these limbs have been dropping, and we haven't always been notified. And at Christmas time, a limb dropped just before the lady arrived home, and it actually blocked her driveway, so the neighbours hopped in because she's on her own. And they actually removed the limb, and she said to me, "I'm terrified." So I think there's a lot of people in those streets that have come to council before, and we haven't done anything about it. But I think that now, as the CEO has stated, there's been such problems with these limbs and what they've done to people, we've lost lives. I think it's time now that we need to support the residents and go ahead with the motion.
Thanks councillor Deutsch.
Yes. Personally experienced, my wife almost got killed by a limb falling off a tree. It was three yards further than where she would have been dead. And gum trees have no place within the residential area. Not red gums, not flowering gums, no gum tree, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to speak further for or advance the motion?
Yeah, I can speak for the motion, Madam Mayor. We have been charged with responsibility of creating public safety in our municipality. And as lovely as these trees are, and have been for 70 years, now has come the time, and as I say, it's our responsibility, and we are the people that need to make the decision. I think it's time for them to be taken down and replaced with an appropriate old and new structure.
Thank you. Any further discussion for the motion, against? That being it, put forward the recommendation in three parts. The vote, those in favour? And against? That is carried. Thank you. Item 3.2, review of policies, councillor training and development policy and international and interstate travel policy. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll pass to Ms Bullock to deal with the decision.
Madam Mayor, as part of the ongoing review of council policies, the two policies you mentioned, the council training and development policy and the international and interstate travel policy are presented to council for consideration. Along with the general review of the content and administrative changes, several additions and deletions have been made to both the two policies. For the council training and development policy, there's an addition of wording in the section responsibilities of councillors. In relation to attendance at events and events, a councillor is expected to submit a written or verbal report to the next council meeting detailing the objectives, benefits, and values of, value of the attendance. And also, the council must attend training which is required by them under legislation. Under this particular policy, there's a new section being added called councillor induction programme, which notes the induction programme for new councillors after a election. In the international and interstate travel policy, under the section applying for international and interstate travel, the sentence "international travel will be dealt with only in exceptional circumstances" has been added. And also, the section called cash advance up to $300 has been deleted, and also any reference to cash advance in that particular policy. Once these two policies have been adopted by council, they'll be updated on the website, and all forms relating to these policies will be updated as well.
Thank you. Any questions, councillors? That being the case, we have a recommendation that we adopt the councillor training and development policy and the international and interstate travel policy. Do I have a mover? Thanks councillor Beale, seconded councillor Braithwaite. Do you wish to speak, councillor Beale?
No. Oh, yes, if I say no, it's wrong, because I am speaking. But it's very important that council candidates know in advance of there will be certain things that they'll be required to do. Now, we still don't know what the process will be for pre-election training, but that will be, I don't like using the word forced on us, but it will be mandated, so we won't have much control there. But here, we do have some control, and I think it's a good document.
Very good. Councillor Braithwaite, do you wish to speak?
No, I think it's a good policy, a good update.
Thank you.
I just would like to say something.
Yes.
I'm very happy with this policy, in particular international travel. We are a local government, we are not a federal government. We have no business going interstate, or even if we have to go interstate overseas. This is not our business. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that I think that there's a lot of thought gone into it, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and congratulate the honour of the document.
Very good. Everybody's had their say, which is wonderful, very democratic. And I'll put that to the vote, councillors. Those in favour? And against? That's carried. Thank you. Item 3.3, establishment of the environmental working group. Mr CEO.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You may recall that the November meeting of council, December council, the council made last year, council voted to remove the existing environmental sustainability, sorry, the...
Environmental Sustainability Advisory.
That's right, the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee, and to replace it by another group that would be able to fulfil that function without it being a group to report directly to council within that context. I'm proposing it to establish an environmental working group that will work, will report to me, and then to remain to council, which will have responsibility for assisting in developing the environmental sustainability statement and also in other environmental matters requested by myself. We want to ensure that this group actually fulfills its requirement in providing advice to policy and strategic development before council, not have a voice of its own in terms of directing that situation. It's about advice rather than directing policy and strategic development. I think we need to be very clear about that distinction. I propose the structure here, I think the structure needs to be a mixture of community representatives from our municipal district, but also some skill-based representatives in that space as well. So actually bring a mixture of science with community perspectives in this space. I think it's very, very important. And I guess there's a recommendation there, councillors may have some questions around that. But I guess removing it from that position where it becomes a council, a committee that reports directly to the council, having its life of its own, I think that this provides an opportunity for us to actually get the input that we need in the policy and strategic development without the risks associated with that.
Okay, any questions, councillors? Right, we have a recommendation in three parts. Do I have somebody to move the recommendation as it stands? Councillor Beale's? Do I have a seconder? Councillor Deutsch? Would you like to speak?
Self-explanatory.
Councillor Deutsch?
No, sounds good. Thank you.
Is there another councillor who would like to speak for or against the motion? That being, then I'll put the motion in three parts, the recommendation from council's report. Those in favour? And against? Carried. Item 3.4, the Tunnel Track Linkage Plan Project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a, this project's become more significant than originally was. I guess you would have noted in this year's council plan, actual plan for this year, there was an item of $10,000 in there allocated towards developing a tunnel track linkage plan concept. But we were fortunate that the federal government provided through some bushfire relief, bushfire assistance funding of $200,000, which we can use towards building economic resilience. And I've had some conversations, including with the mayor. I'm proposing to council that we accept this opportunity. I think we've dealt with it, we've had a conversation at a briefing around this as well. That tunnel, the tunnel track provides an opportunity to link Promodale with the Grahampean's Peak Trail. So Grahampean's Peak Trail is a significant piece of infrastructure that will draw in national tourists to our region. Hall's Gap is the centre of the universe in some ways around that track. This provides an opportunity for us to link my own with our musicality with that Peaks Trail track. So it also establishes a tourism opportunity in its own right with the link track, the loop track. But also, there's a really significant old water tunnel there that used to provide water from Bellfield Reservoir to Stoll in the last century. And it actually goes about a... And it actually goes about a kilometre through the mountain to Lake Bellfield. If that could be opened up again, that'd be an incredible tourism opportunity. And the loop track itself would provide a very nice bushwalk environment for people for shorter walks. It represents a great opportunity for the builds and economic resilience around the area and let also link us to the Grand King's Peak Trail. So I commend the opportunity presented to us to council for consideration.
Thank you. Questions, councillors?
This tunnel, if it's in use, has it lighting inside, electric lighting or whatever?
Uh, currently councillor Doish, it doesn't. It's, it's a, it's a tunnel that's currently closed over. But we have to have some negotiation with GMW Water about reopening it. That would be the icing on the cake for the project. If we reopen that tunnel, that'd be fantastic. There are a range of ways we can have that lead or provide lighting for people moving through that, but it's a conversation we've started with GMW Water. We just need to keep moving with it.
You probably need some sort of, um, of walkway as well.
Walk links and whatever else. I think you wouldn't want to walk on the, on the ground with all the floor this way.
So we're spending $10,000 this year and we have the ability to maybe allocate $200,000 to it.
To development, yeah.
After this, um,
After the project might be completed, yeah.
Good.
Any further questions, councillors? Do I have somebody to move the motion? Councillor Doish? Second one, councillor Beals? Do you wish to speak, councillor Doish?
It's good to see something happening outside of our area as well. Wonderful. We've got existing structure there. We can use it for little money. Oh, none of our money anyhow. Even better.
Councillor Beals?
Even without the tunnel, the tunnel, as the CEO says, the icing on the cake. It is an important project for the municipality. I hate to say that the CEO could be right about Paul's gap being considered the gateway to this. We need to change that. This is an ideal starting point for the more adventurous, but not the super adventurous. So even people of me could do this one whereas doing the whole mountain top, you wouldn't be able to do it. No, it's great. And it's not our money, right?
Anybody else wishing to say, councillor?
I, I think it's a really good project. Um, the people of Promona will be very, very happy with this. Just imagine, go for a, a bushwalk and not get sunburned. And then you can come out and you can go to Promona and get your electric car charged in an electric car park. Could you, we could, we could do that.
Councillor Orwood?
Yes, I think it's a great opportunity to do something for the people of Promona. Um, and this sort of thing doesn't appeal to me, but some of my family members will just love it. And we have to cater for everyone. So to have something that's really, really natural that we can promote and we can get people to go through our, not around it, I think is very important. So I think it's a great project. Congratulations.
Okay, I think I can predict the outcome of this recommendation. So I'll put that to the vote, councillors. Those in favour? Against, that is carried. Item 3.5, council support to community organisations, community projects, events and sponsorship.
Thank you, thank you, madam mayor. Um, this follows up from a conversation I've had with councillors previously around our um, somewhat unwieldy, uh, community support fund and sponsorship crisis that we've had in place. And this aims to try to bring together some kind of sensible hope so that we can start to move forward in a you know, easy to describe way to our community, but also as transparent and understood. Well, I guess I'll break into the two elements in terms of the report. The first is sponsorship. At the moment, we do have some funding provided in the budget for sponsorship for a whole range of community events and activities. And this is, uh, items up to about $600 or $700 at the discretion of the CEO by approval through the budget. Um, I'm recommending that that sponsorship be increased to $1,000 at the CEO's discretion. We actually introduce a new category in there which is sponsorship greater than $1,000, where the sponsorship is events through the use of town hall or council venues. Quite often we have organisations approach us to have, uh, use of the town hall, for example, and form sponsorship for their conference or their event. It represents a very cost-effective way of council providing sponsorship to those organisations. But I must say that we do need to acknowledge the revenue impact or the cost impact that has in the town halls as well. I would suggest that we have a budget allocation that we move from the sponsorship budget to the town hall higher budget to recognise that. It's not really, it won't have
Balance it.
It'll balance it. It won't have a direct impact on budget. It just acknowledges the impact that will have on the town hall and its usage and staffing and so forth. And that, that decision-making around those will be by the CEO and the mayor because I think that there's a need for us to be able to have a high level of, um, engagement with council around that through the mayor, but also still have a capacity to make fairly quick decisions around that sponsorship because people need to know pretty quickly when they come in for a move, they want to know that they can have it. So that's pretty important. We don't want to knock back events that can bring hundreds of people to town and provide an opportunity for people to stay overnight, spend money in our local businesses. And we really need that at the moment, let's be honest. So, but that would be a really good outcome, I think, out of that one. The sponsorship cut that's covered off in those two categories. The second element is the community support grant scheme. And currently, uh, it's a fairly unwieldy document. It's about a 10-page document that people have to read through for instructions and what you've got to do to apply and all this. But the application itself has been found quite confusing by a lot of community groups. And my proposal is that we actually have a much simpler process around application, a one-page application and probably a two-page explanatory document so that they can understand what's happening. They don't have to baffle people through this process. It needs to be simple, easily understood so that people are actually encouraged to apply the grants rather than discouraged. We went around last time and I said it on a number of the community engagement sessions we had around that and people were typically very overwhelmed by the level of documentation required around those. So mine is we have a light touch on the documentation, but we also have a different mechanism for making the grants as well, or different timeframes, I guess. And we have three categories. We've currently got two categories. One of them's community event funding, one of them's project funding. I'm suggesting green state community infrastructure funding there too because there was some demand from the community around that. So we have community event funding which has a maximum of $5,000 provided by council on a one to two process basis. So $1 from the community organisation is matched by $2 from the council, up to $5,000 from council. That would be on a rolling funding model because again, quite often, community events can be a great idea, but we've had. They need, they need to have some surety around funding so we can provide that on a rolling basis. We won't actually have cutoff points for allocation of funds in that space. And people will, people will apply and have that granted by the community, um, panel on a rolling basis there. Community infrastructure and project funding. Community infrastructure is $5,000 on a one to two basis. And there'll be four funding rounds a year and project funding will be $3,000 and four funding rounds a year in that space as well. It, we've currently got two to three funding rounds here. I think we need to have four. But again, it gives us an opportunity to think about projects, put them up and get a fairly rapid response around those as well. Um, I think that there'll be a community panel. We'll, we'll seek expressions of interest from people who wish to be on the panel. We won't have the same people on the panel all the time. I should draw from that pool of interested people to form a panel of two or three people to make the decision on the funding. That's in line with current best practices come to the Smith Global Government Inspectorate. I think that will cover us off quite well in that space. There's a recommendation there. I mean, Ms. Bullcock did suggest it was pretty lengthy. Maybe we may need to complete the whole report back into the recommendation. We have to be pretty clear. It's sustainable on its own. So we've got quite a lengthy recommendation that I think covers everything we need to cover. Thank you, madam mayor.
Very good. Any questions, councillors?
Just, just spending on this rolling funding model, right? So that's, that's a, well, the Jello shock at the weekend, they get $5,000 from council. And, you know, that's been rolling on now for years. Um, so it wants the, uh, is it your idea that once that event has established itself and is funded, that to give them certainty in their planning, that they can guarantee on having another $5,000 this year?
I, I would hope that over time, councillor Braithwaite, that that community organisations have ongoing events like that would actually become self-sustaining. That they wouldn't need drawing that council revenue every year to keep their, keep their event going. Sometimes that might be possible. It could be a great event. It still needs that popping up, but the ultimate aim is for those events to stand on their own and grow and prosper in that way.
So the second question is, you don't see that being going on?
Well, I think the reason for rolling funding is, is we will, they'll only get one allocation a year, but it won't, it won't be by a particular timeframe. They need to apply. They can apply now, within a month of whenever they've got it. That's what I'm saying. I think we just need to have a quicker turnaround around the event funding based on some feedback I've had from our own community organisations. So rolling doesn't infer that it's going to be year in, year out. It's a rolling model that doesn't have a cutoff date or a series of cutoff dates through the year.
Applications.
Does that make sense?
Set it all year.
That's right, yes.
Across that one calendar year. Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just think if you're trying to, you need to make
I think, we can make that, we can make that clear.
It does say the maximum funding amount. So it might be 4,000 one year, 5,000 next year, 2,000, 1,000 the years after. Or even less. That's fine with me.
When a, when an event is at the point of being self-sustaining?
Yeah.
And that's recognised. Any further questions, councillors?
I think, I think the important thing is that this, to, in a lot of cases, this is a life-saving thing for people who want to run events because and I, I do believe that it takes the pressure off Dr. Tim as well because I know that people come in at the last minute and say, we can't afford the hall, we can't afford this. And I think this is one way that this council can support those events and the people trying to run them because not everybody is going to run it a profit. We know that. And sometimes when people get down to the nitty-gritty running something and realise that, you know, that they've got to have security, they've got to have this, they've got to have that. It gets very confusing and people get disheartened. And I think this is a great way to go in that I think that it clears up a lot of things. And I also agree that the document we've got at the mind is fairly confusing. And if we can put it down to a couple of pages, I think that's great for the whole community.
Councillor Beals?
Well, I might move the motion.
You'll move it, right? The motion, yeah. Uh, do I have a second one for the two-part recommendation?
I'm happy to say.
Thanks, councillor Orwood.
Just a short statement. It's taking it again away from councillors being involved in the decision-making process.
Yeah.
Putting it into the public who would make better decisions than we would. Uh, and, um, more if you've already mentioned just a part of it, doesn't mean you've got a grant this year, that you will get it next year. So, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Councillor Orwood, do you wish to speak to the motion? Beyond what you've said, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? That being so, we have our two-part recommendation that council endorsed, uh, the approaches per the table uh, around sponsorship of events and activities and also the grants model for, um, events, infrastructure and project funding in the agenda here for, what was it? Item 3.5, just to make sure we're clear. Uh, councillors, I'll call for votes on that recommendation. Those in favour and against, that is carried. Up to section four now, information reports, kicking off with 4.1, building approvals. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, madam mayor. This is, uh, the building approvals report for this month. You'll notice there's given a fallaway in approvals by our municipal buildings of art and an increase in the number by private surveillance, which is in line with our new policy directions in that space. That's good to see that happening. I think that's just for council information.
Very good. No questions, councillors? Uh, we have a recommendation that the building approvals report be received. Do I have somebody to move that motion? Councillor Doish and second to councillor Braithwaite. Thank you. Uh, any comments?
As usual, it's great to see the place going ahead again.
It is. I'll put the, uh, the recommendation to the vote, councillors. Those in favour and against, that is carried. Uh, item 4.2, planning matters approved under delegation, planning permits and certification of subdivision plans. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, madam mayor. A fellow broke report this month. Uh, there were, there were some planning permits issued under delegation in February. Um, the thing I would say here is that I was speaking to Ms. Schilling, our manager of planning, community compliance today. She was indicating they're receiving three or four planning inquiries a day at the moment. So into March, there's a real increase in interest in, uh, in developing the municipality. You talked about what's driving that because it seems a bit counterintuitive given the other circumstances I've brought in, but I'm not criticizing. It's a great time, I think. So, yeah.
Uh, any questions, councillors? Do I have somebody to move the report? Councillor Orwood, second up. Councillor Braithwaite, thank you. Uh, do you wish to speak?
No.
Councillor Braithwaite? Anybody else wishing to speak? I'll put the recommendation that the report be approved, uh, that, sorry, the report on planning matters. We will approve that. Those in favour and against, that's carried. Section five, committee minutes and reports. The first being section 86, committees of management minutes. Mr. CEO?
Thank you, madam mayor. Uh, this is a very straightforward report unless the council got any queries on the individual meetings, but the, uh, the listings there of meetings attended by councillors and staff during that period. And there are minutes of those committee meetings in the attachments.
Thank you, councillors. Any questions?
Um, just that Promona Walk Committee have finally given me their day. And it clashes with, okay, that's what you're doing.
As Bioka does, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, I'd like to make a comment that, uh, it is actually noted for the Westmere Progress Association Committee meeting that I attended on the 17th of the second. In fact, the Westmere Progress Association Committee hasn't notified me of any meeting dates until the last month when, um, they arranged for us to meet. It was going to be yesterday morning, but that was cancelled. So just a, just a little bit of a typo there perhaps. Um, that that perhaps be struck from the record. I wasn't notified that I couldn't attend that February meeting. Any other comments, councillor?
Councillor Braithwaite, has that made the day changed? Because it hasn't previously clashed, has it?
Uh, it's always clashed with either a council meeting or, or AIC.
Okay.
Usually the first one of the month.
Yeah.
I'll also be attending the, um, Moisten, uh, hall committee meeting on the 31st of March instead of Castle Pen.
Thank you. Well, councillors, we have a recommendation in seven parts that we receive ordinary meeting minutes of a number of section 86 committees. Do you have somebody to move? Thank you, councillor Beals. Second to councillor Braithwaite. Do you wish to speak?
No, thank you.
Nobody?
Just on the Warwick Hall, was it, um, intend out there to put up a tourist sign? And they are getting fairly agitated about that because it's been about seven years in the planning, um, the last
Must be a good one.
Yeah, well, I think it, I think it's going to be a major project and I would be so excited if it ever happens. What's happened is for the first five years, they talked about it. For the last two years, they've had two posts put where it's going to go. And that's the last two years. It's getting really frustrating. And the other thing out of that committee, they've actually formed another committee, look after the wreck reserve through the department. So they're, they're very, it's really good when you go out there because there's a lot of people at the meetings, a lot of interest in it. So, yeah. Some good projects out there, but we need that tourist on plumes.
Uh, councillors, I'll put that recommendation to the vote. Those in favour and against, that's carried. Uh, 5.2, the advisory committee minutes. We have a recommendation that the advisory committees report be received. Mr. CEO?
Um, I don't guess anything must be reported. There is, uh, an audit committee meeting held on the 3rd of March, which is supported by them. And there's also the municipal emergency management planning committee, which is held on 7th August and the 25th, and the 5th of December 2019, I think it was reported, passed by the committee as well.
Can I just, I'm not going to clear interest because I've been told I don't have to, but my son has been at the emergency management committee meeting, so I just like that. We call it.
Thanks, councillor Orwood. Any questions, councillors? Do you have somebody to move the recommendation that the advisory committee's report be received? Uh, that's councillor Braithwaite and second to councillor Doish. Thank you. Nothing to say. We'll put that to the vote. Those in favour and against, that is carried. Section six, the assembly of councillors. Mr. CEO?
Uh, there are two assemblies held on 3rd of March and 10th of March this year. Um, given that those are attached, so.
Very good. Any questions, councillors?
Well, I have a, um, an idea that you might like. Um, in the, given the, the COVID-19 response, why don't we just hold one assembly of council meeting per month and go for a longer period of time? And maybe be the second one in a month to give the CEO more time to appear all the documents and the, the stuff. And if, and quite often we do in, in a half, three quarters of an hour, right? Maybe in an hour and a half, you can do two, you know?
in an hour and a half you can do two, you know, that's only an idea, saves one bit.
Councillor Allgood.
I'd just like to ask a question, with the actual budget coming up, would that be an idea or is that feasible to do it that way, or how do you feel? I'm just wondering how the CEO feels about that at this time of the year.
I think that it's certainly feasible to have one, one assembly, one briefing a month, that that's, that's council's choice, I would say, I'm but the humble servant, so I think that it's...
Does it create you any problems for you?
No, it doesn't create any problems for me, in fact, if it was the second meeting of the month, I think, both of them make a good point, gives me extended time to actually do some prep for those briefings, and I think the quality of the briefing material probably improved somewhat, defend that opportunity as well.
Maybe we can just do it for the next six months?
But it's not my choice to try and push council.
It's actually, it's actually an issue that, that I have had discussion with the CEO about, about the structure of our briefings and whether or not we would benefit the council from having one longer session, and we have just been playing it by ear. I think it's a really good point that you raise, and I'd appreciate if we could consider that, we'll just have to bear in mind what recommendations do come from health agencies, government agencies about meetings?
Food meetings, yeah.
And I think respond accordingly, but it's certainly something that we can move quite swiftly on when we need to, if you're comfortable with that. Yes, councillor Beals?
The choice of calling meetings is solely yours, so make a decision, I think we'd all be happy with that. If you got really desperate and you went through a budget session, you could have the CEO do a counselling one by one, take the whole day.
I would love that.
It would be more, very glad to close that council bill, so do it that way.
Could I just have that, I know that it's recorded, it came from that side of the room, we don't want to do that.
In your hands, Madam Mayor, you, you believe that there's a benefit, I think there would be a benefit, to have slightly longer meetings and only have one, two?
Well, I don't believe that this is something that we need to actually move the motion, I think it's something that's actually our own arrangement, so we'll certainly act on that, yeah, yeah. If that's council's wish, that's what we can do, certainly, I think we will respond in a timely manner.
At least it's going to get in the way of the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, I think, I think as events unfold over coming weeks, we will respond in a timely manner. I wouldn't want to restrict us to meeting only the second week of the month, because we've made a decision at this point in time, I'd like to reserve the option of perhaps calling an assembly if required in the first week of the month also, if you're comfortable with that, yeah. Right, we'll move back to the agenda and the recommendation we have that the assembly of councillors' reports be received, did we, I can't remember, did we have a mover? Thank you very much, Ms Walcott, for bringing us back into line. Councillor Deutch, I saw your hand, and councillor Braithwaite, I saw yours, Seconda, so I'll put that to the vote, those in favour, and that is carried, thank you. Item seven, we have councillor reports, so moving around the room, councillor Allgood.
Yes, I actually attended the Alexander Hall committee meetings, and I've actually passed it on to the committee that there is a need for a first aid kit there, we're not quite sure who's responsible for that, I think they were going to contact councillor about it, but he'd been very happy about the attitude of the workmen that have gone down there to do the odd jobs, if they've had a problem, they've had very quick response, which they're really happy about, so I'd just like to pass that on to council. We did attend some of the Javelin functions over the weekend, and they were well attended, the amount of cars that were in the street on Saturday morning was pretty impressive, and they were back again on Sunday, so it's really good to know that the people are getting that support. And then to finish off the day, we went out to the sheepdog trials, and they're just amazing, I just think that the way that they manage those dogs and that, and they have, good act comes out there too, because they had people camping at the grounds, so that's a bit of income for the Moyston people as well, so yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Deutch.
With the Lake Bora complex meeting, maybe I could invite the CEO to address us again sometime in the future, alleviate some of the angst they have to end Lake Bora, thank you.
Thanks councillor Deutch.
Never happened.
Councillor Beals?
I attended the municipal emergency management committee meeting on the 4th of March, and we didn't have a quorum, so it had to be adjourned until Monday, and I was unavailable, and I thank you for attending on my behalf. I have attended the MAV human services committee, and I've also attended the MAV emergency management committee. The interesting thing about the last one, of the 31 members, and mind you, I've never seen more than 15 there, only three of us got into town last Friday, and they were the furthest travellers, the closer ones just didn't even attend, some tried, so I mean, that's why I said, well, you've got eight people trying to come through a TV set, and you're in who's in chat, and actually chaired the meeting, the person that chaired the meeting wasn't at the meeting. So it was horrendous, so there are issues with that, but the only ones I've actually done have been pretty careful last month, thank you.
Thanks councillor Beals, councillor Braithwaite.
I just attended the audit committee where we have a new chairman, Mr Brian Dean, and a new delegate, which is Jesse...
Just, just like Adler.
Adler, yes, who was very, made very good contributions to the league.
She did, that's it, very good, thanks councillor Braithwaite. Since the February meeting, I have met with the CEO for a regional tourism review, just a meeting that we had, I attended the staff session of the resilience project at the Ararat Town Hall, and the community has certainly been most enamoured by the process of that project coming into, into Ararat district. The Marina Recreation Reserve held their AGM on Tuesday the 28th, and I attended that, and plans were made for their Anzac Day memorial service, which is customarily held the day before Anzac Day when it falls on a weekend, so that the Marina primary school students can participate. The following day, I travelled down to Melbourne to attend the local government minister's mayoral advisory panel, and the items on the agenda concerned the local government act that I understand has actually passed the House this evening, or late this afternoon?
Right this afternoon.
Yes, it has, so there were elements of the act, the first stage of the act, that was discussed around the table with the mayors present, and quite a bit of discussion around the mandatory training of councillor candidates, which covers sitting councillors as well, it's an expectation by the BEC that are now under legislation, that all candidates for the election later this year will participate in that mandatory training. Discussion was also held around the bushfire recovery process that the state government is undertaking. Then I attended the University of the Third Age AGM on the 2nd of March, and had the audit committee meeting the following day. I attended the Wimmer and Machinery Field Days on Wednesday, 4th of March, and then on the 6th of March, in the Alexander Gardens, the suicide prevention memorial walk, which was an incredibly moving experience, and I'm sure will become an annual event for the community. It was extremely, a very well considered process of commemoration for people in the community who have lost their lives to suicide, and just, I can't commend the organisers highly enough, actually, it was, it was very, very, very well done. We have, we had the Wollora Healthcare Market as well, actually, on the 1st of March, I think I've missed that out, and that was, again, a tremendous day run by the East Grand King's Health Auxiliary Wollora Campus branch. Then, following that, I attended the International Women's Day event out at Hopkins Correctional Centre, interestingly, a number of senior staff from the centre were unable to participate because they were in the midst of discussions around how Corrections Victoria is going to handle the COVID-19 event. Following on from that, councillor Beals, I did stand in for you for the municipal emergency management planning committee meeting, and once again, quorum was not attained, nevertheless, there was still constructive discussion held around how our emergency agencies are going to be approaching the management of the risk of coronavirus in our community, so it was still a worthwhile meeting to have attended, and that summarises what I have been doing for the record. So we'll move on to section eight, which is notices of motion, and we do have a notice of motion brought by councillor Wenda Allgood, and councillor, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, it's my intention at the ordinary council meeting, the Ararat City Council to be out on the 17th of March 2020.
Oh, sorry, I do beg your pardon, I didn't move a recommendation that our councillor reports be received, sorry to interrupt you, I completely overlooked that, that's section of...
The broad...
Exactly, I'm sorry about that, councillor Allgood. So I'll put the motion that the councillor reports be received, those in favour, that is carried, thank you. Now, back to section eight, and the notice of motion from you councillor Allgood, again, I apologise.
I'll wait, probably go back to the first sentence, heard it, we've heard it.
You have a motion to move, thank you.
I do, the council investigate holding an Ararat sports person's night to recognise it celebrates sporting achievements of residents and former residents of the municipality.
Thank you, is there a discussion you'd like to...
I'll do the second one.
Okay, a discussion, Seconda to the motion. Councillor Beals?
It's, it's really an interesting one, because it's not really something that I have come up with, I was approached by a young dad who's really into sport, and he said, we have a lot of sporting people that have been involved in Ararat, we are the home of football, and I have heard the book from out at Moyston, we have, I'm embarrassed Jenny, her grandfather was the first grand line medalist, we have Shane Kelly, we have Renee Kink, we have a number of people within our community who are sports person, we've always been known as a sporting town, and I haven't even touched the smaller communities, who you pick up the paper and they're all doing fantastic things, and the dad that suggested this, his son's really into sport, and I think we need to encourage that, and I'm not saying that we're going to hold it next week or the week after, I'd just like to see if there's enough interest from the councillors and to take it out there into the community, to see if they would embrace it, because it would cover, it would embrace all ages right throughout the municipality, and I just think it's great when people come up and make these suggestions about something you don't even think about, and all of a sudden it's there and you think, how simple is that? If lots of people would do that, I'm sure our community would thrive a lot more on sports achievements.
Thanks councillor Allgood. Councillor Beals, do you wish to speak?
No.
Are there any other councillors wishing to speak?
I've got a question, ma'am.
You have a question, councillor?
I don't, I don't actually really support the motion, I thought it was seconded, so we could have a debate about the process. Investigate, I would happy, would be happy to investigate, if it would be, for example, finding out the process for the Ballarat Sports Awards or something like that, at this stage allowing, that as Wenda said, it's not going to happen overnight, the virus is not going to happen, we don't know when, but if we could have a, I don't want staff to spend a lot of time in the current circumstances, so if the investigation is to get some reports back from those organisations, I'd be very happy, and I will support the motion out, if the CEO goes down that path without going into the nuances of the whole thing.
Oh, we would specifically, really?
Yeah, yeah.
What comes after?
Do you want to comment on that?
Yes.
I'm very happy to restrain my excitement around the project and restrict it to just looking at how other sports persons awards are being run, there are a whole lot of examples we can draw on there pretty readily, and I think it really is about a couple of hours' work, we can pull together a report and come back to a briefing.
I think the important thing to certainly, from the report, say Ballarat, obviously they've got the sports as well, and to know what organisations are behind that?
Yeah.
And what cost it is?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Any other questions or comments, councillors? That being the case, we'll...
I just, the reason we did it this way, and I did work with Jenny on this, because what we wanted to do was, we didn't want to set anything in concrete, because I don't know what it would cost, I agree, but I just think that it's something that's come from the community, and we are all about community, and how we try and encourage our youth, and this gets right down to the youth, because there's a lot of young people doing great things out there, as I said before, Moyston was the home of football, but look what we've produced right throughout our municipality as far as our sports person, you've only got to look at Taddy Udon and Craig Asbury, I mean, it's right across the municipality, this idea, and I just think it's a great idea to be investigated, I don't want to spend a lot of money, but I do want to know what's involved, I have no idea, and I think that this is a first step in the process, and that's all I'm asking councillors to support this on.
Very good, I'll put the motion to the vote, councillors, those in favour and against, that is carried. Thank you, we've already dealt with urgent business, and so we're up to section 10, which is closing the open session of the meeting, so that we can move into discussion of confidential items, and those confidential issues concern advisory committee minutes and the facade improvement grants scheme. I have a recommendation that the open council meeting now be closed, and I don't think there's any discussion on this, somebody to move that, councillor Beals, councillor Deutch, those in favour, that is carried, thank you, the meeting is closed, we'll move into the votes meeting.